All right, we'll open up planning board meeting for April 12, 2022. This is being recording, recorded. If anybody's recording, you need to let us know. Okay, it's being conducted via the hybrid manner, live and via Zoom per the general laws. Planning board members on Zoom?
Mr. Artzinger is on Zoom.
Okay, so no markers.
That's correct.
All right. Seven o'clock town planners report.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. All right, since the last meeting, I had a couple of meetings. Met with Mr. Jim Boyle, actually spoke with him, I should say, regarding self-storage facilities in zoning in Southwick. Some of that discussion revolved around opportunities within the industrial restricted zone. And it also reflected upon the US application that was withdrawn for self-storage because it was in the business, I think, business district off College Highway. Let's see, I met with representatives from Lobestar Energy. The operators and I should say applicants for the solar facility at Goose Pond. They are looking to potentially expand the footprint of that facility. So this is the one that's further away from College Highway. Wanted to meet and show an informal plan, talk about if what was on lines lay in relation to the parcel and the remaining buffer around that property. There's some remaining open acreage that I think they are looking to take advantage of, spare off, and it's surrounded essentially by tremendous areas of wetland.
Is this the same company that did the one in the front?
No, different from the one that's closest to College Highway. I also met with Lori Scott Smith, 21 Matthews. She previously met with the former town planner regarding home occupation. She operates a spray tanning business that got put on hold during COVID and she was just doing her due diligence to come in, check the combination, nothing had changed on the planning side. So she intends to either continue or reestablish, I don't know which is the case, her business to get locally and resume operation. Just looking at upcoming applications. Second US month on the 26th will open a subdivision application for five residential lots, one open space lot and remaining acreage off of Hillside Road. And only other item I have for that at the moment will be our working for acreage off of, I should say acreage, square feet off of White Street, where there was a discussion regarding turnaround that the town currently maintains land of Crime and Minds Association and a landowner on the opposite side from the lake that has been maintaining land over there for some time. That came to a point of, we'll call it agreement with the town through town council's input. We'll bring it to us then A and R. The last thing I'll notice is that we have the main meeting, May 10. I think there's a town event on that day.
It's town elections.
You have elections.
Town elections on that day, so I don't know if that poses a problem. I just wanted to raise that for discussion.
Yeah, you can't, yeah, it's.
Yeah, it is on election day.
There we go.
Why, I feel like you do this every year and try to think about it and then do it every year.
We just like to keep a shell on our toes.
Yeah. All right, well, it's, I'm leaving it to you because the chances of me being at that meeting are slim, so.
And the Tuesday before is voting day, right?
The ninth is election, right? Ninth is election, is voting and 16th is town meeting, is that right?
Uh, 10th, 17th.
10th, 17th.
It's the 10th and the 17th.
That will be right. 10th, 17th.
Very impressive you were one day.
I'm thinking, okay.
So we don't necessarily want to have a meeting on.
Correct, town meeting would be tough, right? And you can't have an election day, a town meeting would be tough, so.
Is there anything that would warrant us having a meeting on the third?
Not, well, we, that hillside area is going to be open, but like, again, I'm going to be, I'm probably not going to be here on the third or the 10th or the 17th or the 24th. Possibly the 31st, so May is going to be tough for me, so I'll leave it up to you.
Can we not do? Line up any meetings for that? My, uh, my son's being deployed overseas on the 6th and I'm going to be spending those four days with him before he goes.
All right, hold on, let me just.
Not here, anticipated.
We have the 26th. Is our June meeting, you know?
June 28th.
Yeah, we shouldn't be having June 28th. All right, my suggestion is going to be hold it on the 26th and May 17th and then June 7th.
So just to clarify, 26th, April, May 17th is town meeting.
Oh, shoot. 24th, 24th, yeah, sorry.
Yes.
24th and then June 7th.
Okay, just want to make sure we touched upon those.
So yeah, April 26th, May 24th, then June 7th, and then I guess on the 28th.
That's the, that's the intention.
And one in July.
That's correct.
Okay. All right.
What's the date of the July 1?
Uh, 12th.
Did you say April 27th?
April 26th.
26th.
I may have said.
That was dead hard. All right, what about, um, 101 or no?
Sure, let's, uh, let's give an update on that, so sometime prior to my arrival in June, the building inspector issued a citation fine to 101 Point Grove Road related to, to be the lease of, for the renting of boat slips. Which we know is a problem because there's no off-street parking provided for that use of that site. Towards the latter half of, I believe, last week, we got an update that the matter had been, I'm going to use a term dismissed. Is that the proper term? Over to you start that all over again. The officer representing the matter, before the clerk came back and reported that the fine had been dismissed, given that they, there was inadequate information about the parking and the zoning violation in the first place. So to that end, and not knowing tremendous detail on how that came to pass, I, we did briefly speak with the chief and if the violation continues into the future and the owner is cited again, I would likely attend alongside the building inspector to shed more light upon the matter.
All right.
So I only have a little bit of information, apologies.
Yeah, well, no, we'll try to get more information in the meantime, and there's also a new, potentially a new issue with the dock going in there that I don't know anything about other than it's been brought up, so. I'm, I'm, I'm done with this nonsense, so, um, so we'll figure this out. And, I mean, at a minimum, she doesn't have a use permit from us. She specifically is prohibited from leasing slips or from altering the dock in any way under their, her Chapter 91 license. So, you know, it's just, I think, a matter of figuring out the steps, so, but this is, I mean, I've dealt with this, I think, on a yearly basis since I've been on the board, so. I'm sure it's going on, but since I've been on the board, that's eight years, so. We'll figure it out, but that'll, I'm sure, be on the agenda going forward. All right, anything else?
That's it for me.
Okay. 7:05 public comment, anybody have anything for the board tonight that is not on the agenda? We'll start with people in person. Okay, then we'll go to Zoom, anybody?
I see you don't hand-verse.
Okay. 710, 159 Berkshire Avenue. Tell me about all extensive.
Sure, we have received updated information. Essentially, we have a review packet, a series of attachments submitted by Mr. Hale, the engineer representing the application. He is in attendance this evening and if he wants to give us a, a brief overview of the, suppose the intention or the arc that this will travel. But at this point, Randy and I will likely be sitting down to walk through the application review side by side with the original comment letter.
But we did get a decent amount of stuff.
Oh, yes, we've got a, we have a review package.
That's what I understand, okay.
To that end, that review, that joint review may not be able to be concluded before April 26th, as I'll be out of the office next week. Don't tell me.
But as long as we're moving it forward and stuff has come in, it's fine. So probably end up around the May 24th, but that'll be plenty of time to review and move it. Sure, in the right direction.
That's right. Would you like to entertain some?
If he has anything to offer or wants to summarize what's been submitted, he can certainly do something.
Sure.
Fantastic.
So, good, good evening, everyone, thank you. Just a quick summary, so I can just rattle off a few things that came through, the, uh, the application was started, submitted, uh, the letters, the correspondence, going back and forth, the, the two or three site visits, phone calls, so different things to address. Prepared a hydrology report for existing versus proposed onsite hydrology and offsite stormwater that would contribute to the overall system. Looked at that, balanced out elevations and incorporated it into the design, so I came up with a working solution there. Developing the stormwater management plan, I've submitted a draft or it's a plan, we'll call it that, it's a for review. There to be some additional comments for that and maybe a couple of things to include that I didn't think of yet, but between the stormwater management plan, erosion control plan, operation and maintenance manual, some inspection requirements are going to be included. And once all those plans are reviewed, we'll probably be focusing in detail on the construction sequence part of it and the details there, the construction details, so I'm, I'm sort of looking for more for those comments back now and we'll, we'll work towards, towards the common goal here.
All right, anything from the board? Okay, so there's nothing, I assume there's nothing else since we didn't actually have meetings yet.
That's true.
So why don't we just put it on, same thing, 710, May 24th? And yeah. Do I hear a motion? So moved, do I hear a second?
Second.
Do a roll call vote, Michael Doherty, I.
He's been a I.
Saving something, I.
Jessica Thorpe and I.
Stick out there.
He is, I think. He's muted though.
All right. Hi.
Perfect.
Is that an I or a hi?
Doesn't matter.
We're taking it, we're taking it as an I, all right. So that'll go to 710 on the May 24th.
Thank you.
Can you just, what I've told Dick Knell in his, in his Lake Management hat, is that if you see applications come in that relate to, relate in some way, that you will not only forward the original one, which I think automatically goes over to them, but any subsequent things we get during the course of that.
Sure, not a problem, this is hot off the presses, but we'll get that distributed over to.
Yep, appreciate that. Okay.
Thanks, Derek.
Very good, thank you.
715, informal discussion, 686 College Highway, Contemplated Feral Gas Blue Rhino Reconditioning and Refill Facility for Propane Cylinders.
Sorry if I spoke too soon, my apologies.
It's okay, I'm not used to not having a computer in front of me, so it's throwing me off a little bit, so, sorry for that. Why don't you just introduce yourself and then we, and, and start off with what you want to present to discuss and we'll go from there.
Absolutely, thank you, Southwick, for letting us have your time this evening during your meeting. Very much appreciated. My name is Kristi Grego and I am the manager of real estate for Feral Gas Blue Rhino. And we're just going to go through a brief introduction of our team that's working on this project, so Megan Sharp, if you want to take it away.
Thank you so much, and, um, I do see that the, the host sharing is not available. We did have an overall presentation, I'm not certain if we're able to show that on here, if not, we understand.
You are, just give us one minute to adjust the security setting.
Thank you. Thank you.
Go ahead, Megan.
Okay, perfect. Can you see that?
Yes, thank you.
All right, I'll start, I, I'm Jill Rhodes, Vice President of Production for the Blue Rhino Production Facilities.
And I'm Megan Sharp, I'm our VP of Operations Support, so I oversee our safety team, our risk team, fleet and real estate as well.
And I'm Rufus Youngblood, Director of Safety for Feral Gas.
Good, good evening, I'm Josh McCloud, I'm the Manager of Safety for Blue Rhino.
I'm Brandon Stewart, I'm the Plant Manager in Taveras, Florida.
And I'm Jim McGrath, I'm the Plant Manager in Hutchins, Texas.
Good evening, Southwick, I'm Dayon Andrajik, I'm the General Manager for the Blue Rhino Northeast Division, responsible for barbecue tank exchange operations throughout New York State and all of New England.
And we also have Denny Moser, who was unable to be with us tonight for environmental, but we, we just want to thank you for allowing us to be here and taking the time overall for us to have this informal discussion with you. This is just a brief overview of what we will cover and I'll really review who we are and what we're all about. But this will be followed by our safety team with Josh and Jill Rhodes, she'll present an overview of our production as well as Brandon Stewart on the plant tour, but we just ask that if there are any questions or feedback, feel free to interrupt us, ask questions, or if there is availability in the chat, we, we can monitor that too and, and answer questions as well. But you can see the, the pink right there, that pinkish color, and, and this really shows Southwick, and then around there is all of our current customer for cylinder exchange and bulk customers that we currently service that are, that are part of your community within Southwick and that we value as customers in the area. And so we were, Feral Gas was founded, Blue Rhino, in 1939 by AC Farrell, and this was in Atchison, Kansas. So AC's son, Jim Farrell, he is still our CEO today and heavily involved in, in our success. We have over 4,000 employees and we are the second largest propane company in the United States. We're all employee owners of Feral Gas and we really are a small family company with many communities across the United States that we take part in. We have approximately 864 man locations and about 62,000 tank exchange locations, so we have about a million customers in all 50 states that we're serving. We do service different customer segments from residential, industrial, agricultural, resellers, and, and many other customers, tank exchange production just throughout the United States. So our structure is set up with Feral Gas as our retail component and Blue Rhino with our tank exchange and production. And we have Feral North America, that's our, our wholesale distributor, but we are very intertwined in all of our businesses, so this just shows a map of overall for Blue Rhino, so you can see the Blue Rhino production facilities, the Blue Rhino service units, as well as the smaller circles are our Feral Gas service units, and we have a few different independent production facilities overall as well. And this map just shows our active owned properties and lease sites that Feral Gas and Blue Rhino have across the US, so we currently manage just over a thousand owned properties across the US and about 600 leased properties as well. But we're, we're heavily focused on our environment overall and so you can see here, like, within social, environmental and governance, we, we do more and we're heavily invested. We, we are contributing in our local communities. Blue Rhino is now the sole provider of our Operation Barbecue Relief, and we provide 100% of support for propane for disaster relief and response that we move on quickly to ensure thousands of people have a meal with our mo, with the mobile kitchens. And we participate in the International Rhino Foundation. We do have about 300 veterans and Air National Guard Reserve active duty employees, about 10% of our employees. And we do have bobtails in the field that are camouflage dedicated to the employees that have served our nation and Feral Gas, and I'm fortunate as a current member of the Air National Guard to have Feral Gas's full suppo, support over the last 16 years with the company deploying on a couple of occasions as well too. And our new employees that start, they get an opportunity to contribute to an organization of their choice, and the Veterans Association has picked a lot. We also do Operation Warm, it's another initiative that we're heavily involved with in providing coats for, for children in the winter and it's continued successfully over the years, but propane is really a great alternative fuel that better, you know, overall than our electric partners, it's hydrogen rich, we use it for our vehicles and, and really good for our environment overall. Just here, we, our, our, our company is currently taking part in Earth Day, so we have been since the beginning of, of April and moving through the next 10 days, so every employee is actively involved in some way or another. And whether that is picking up trash in our local areas to our ESG tree initiative, where we're planting trees on several properties, improving the environment when we can, and even in areas where we have to cut down trees that we are ensuring that we are, you know, planting more trees and keeping our areas beautified. But our corporate locations of Kansas City and Winston, Salem, we've taken part in the local community activities within Earth Day and just, just a lot of overall things, and I barely just touched on a few of the things that, that we do as employee owners, but with that, I will pass it over to, to Josh, but if there are any questions, we can take them now just before we move on to the safety portion as well.
Anything on the board? All right, why don't we move on?
Okay, thank you.
All right, good evening, I appreciate the time to, to share this evening. I'm going to share this kind of briefly about the, kind of the overall safety structure of Blue Rhino and our production facilities. You know, safety is a part of, of everything we do. It's kind of the, the glasses that we look through and how we, we see and interact with those around us. As part of our safety structure, first day on the job, new, new, excuse me, new employees are required to complete first day training requirements before they can begin work. Each, each employee is required to attend monthly safety meetings that reinforce or refresh original safety topics for OSHA and DOT guidelines, and all of our training meets that OSHA and DOT standard training requirements. Our facilities are built to ensure the safety of the public, employees and emergency responders. Each facility includes fencing to create a barrier between the public and the product. In the event of emergency, we have heat stops throughout the facility which will shut down the flow of the gas at the bulk tanks to eliminate potential large release. Policies and practices are in place for what to do in case of emergency and how to respond to extreme weather conditions. We follow NFPA, DOT and local code standards and regulations for not only the, the building of our plants, but also for safety and security of the, the public around us. Continuing with, with safety is a part of everything we do, we also comply with OSHA 1910-119 Process Safety Management, and it's, it is a big part of everything that we do as well. You know, I think some of you are probably aware that nine years ago, we had an incident at our facility in Taveras, Florida, which we had a large, large fire in the storage area of, of that facility. The fire was contained in the storage yard only and Blue Rhino responded immediately to make changes to identify threats and solutions. We relied upon internal experts, we have a lot of tenure within our company, and external experts to identify what needs to be done to ensure that we do not, we would not have a repeat. Some of the items that we have done in response to that incident in, in Taveras was we beefed up a lot of our policies and procedures in part of our process teaching management program. And I do want to tell you that PSM, this is an acronym that we use quite a bit within our day-to-day life, but it's something that is, that we live and breathe on a day-to-day basis. PSM encompasses 14 elements that focus on mainly employee safety, hazard analysis, training and inspections. And this isn't something that just is a program that sits on the shelf, but it's something that we are involved. Each year, we review all of our policies and procedures in relation to the plants and corporate policies and procedures as well. Some of the items that we updated after the incident in Taveras, we added three policies to ensure the safety around the plant. One of those policies was a product containment policy of what to do in case of a gas, you know, what, what are the steps that are taken in a, in the, in the event of a release, either from the piping or, you know, if there's a leak with the cylinder in the yard. Also, within that policy, we state that we are going to lock the yard on a consistent basis and make sure that we cannot identify any leaking cylinders that may be in the yard, or we identify them early. We, we added a policy on storage yard guidelines, so how are we, are we going to store our product in the yard in a safe manner in relation to everything that goes on? What are our setbacks from our offices, from our parking, from our trash, from just the production facility itself? And what are the, the distances between even the stored product? I mentioned that that's, the fire was contained in the storage yard. And so one of the big steps that we did is we put six-foot rows between every row of silvers. So we, we spaced the product out as a, as a way to identify a potential hazard and eliminate or reduce the hazard. We also included a traffic control policy. Who can come on the yard, where can they go, where do we park? You know, we, we do our best to control the flow of traffic and interaction on the facility with, with public vendors and make sure that we are interacting with everyone in a safe manner. We added a section to our process hazard analysis. You can see there that we, every five years, we review our PHA, and so we added a whole section just around the storage yard. And, you know, what, what potential threats are there and how do we mitigate those threats, what are our safeguards in place? And so we, and we look at that every five years and we go through a process that takes the better part of a week of sitting down and just reviewing what could happen and how do we protect ourselves from that, that particular incident happening. Uh, what could happen and how do we protect ourselves from that, that particular incident happening? Um, so we have, except PSM is, is, is a lot of what we do within our safety program. Um, but we also have other programs in place to ensure the safety, um, of the, the people that work for us and work with us. Um, we have preventative maintenance program that's pretty robust and, um, we continue to learn from it and how to better maintain our equipment. Um, and eliminate downtime. Um, as I view. Downtime, you know, we want to schedule it because when things happen, uh, out of, out of sequence or out of a timing event, um, that's when. Something, a potential issue could occur. And so when we schedule downtime, we have more, uh, more control over what's going on. Um, and we also have, uh, an electrical inspection program. Where we invite the local electrician that works with the company to come out every year and review our. Our panels and make sure everything's tight. And then every other year, we have somebody come in and do, uh, thermography study where we have the. Take a look at all of our contact points within the facility electrically and identify any hotspots. And so we can, um. Resolve those issues before they become issue. You know, and, and we say that we do all these things, um, and all these inspections and. Um, you know, internal and, and third party, but what good is it if, if we don't have follow-through and follow-up? So every third, every internal and third-party type inspection, we create a practice action plan. To ensure deficiencies are correct and that we're, we're keeping up to that. And that's. Um, reviewed with the plant managers on a regular basis, either by myself or, um, or the DPO production. With, Jill, you want to take it away?
Yes, I'll take it away. Thanks, Josh. Uh, one thing I would like to add on, on the, the three-year PSM program audits. And also on the five-year process hazard analysis evaluate revalidations, those occur at every plant. So every year Josh is doing about five, uh, PSM three-year audits and about three process hazard. Analysis revalidations. And we also, it's not just the plant manager of the facility that's being audited. We'll bring in one or two other ones. So this is just a constant process. This is something that is dealt with. Every single day of probably the year. So moving on to Southwick, um. We currently have eleven company-owned production facilities across the country. We don't have a presence of our own in the Northeast. So Southwick, Massachusetts would be the largest. On an annual basis, volume facility and that is projected to be at four point two million cylinders a year. As you know, from living here, the season is compressed. So about sixty-five percent of that volume falls between mid-April and August. We typically run four days a week, Monday through Thursday. We would look to do two ten-hour shifts. With adjustments as demand calls for it. On the production side, we would need fifty full-time employees and in the, in the peak season, we would. Another twenty-five seasonal employees. And that is just on the production side. Um, on the distribution side. There would be another twenty-five or so that would, that would help getting the cylinders to the retailers and back. We need about twenty-five. Um, all right, I'm hearing a little bit of feedback. Is everybody hear me? Okay.
Yeah, sounds good.
Right. So we, we anticipate that we need about twenty-five acres for this facility. It would have a twenty-five thousand square foot production building. We would like to have another ten thousand square foot covered dock. On the storage yard, we estimate that we would have about a hundred and twenty thousand cylinders at any one time. And that would be in varying degrees of full or empty or needing to be refurbished. During the peak time, what would the traffic to be is we would be ten, um, bulk propane deliveries a day. We would have twenty-five long haul trucks going out and we would have another seventeen smaller route trucks going out. Dayhan, would you like to add anything for the distribution side?
Uh, no, uh, you, you've, uh, you've touched on it. So, um, our, our delivery vehicles, what we use. To send the product out to Lowe's, Walmart, Walgreens, all those customers that we have in New England. We use typically, uh, a very similar configuration to what you see that Coca-Cola and Pepsi use or. They are actually beverage body trailers with the roll-up doors, um, and typically that, that's the style of vehicle. Uh, we do not have any Jake braking on these trucks. Uh, they are all, uh, uh, within a, uh, three years old. We don't use any older equipment. So there's no noise, no pollution. We've, we've mitigated all of that. By ensuring that our fleets are constantly, at least within the last three years of, um, uh, of, uh, being, uh, built and issued to us. So we're, we take a lot of pride in the safety and, uh, appearance. And operability of our vehicles and our assets that are on the road.
Any questions so far? Are those numbers per day?
Yes.
Have a sense of the sh- of the shift times typically on, on other facilities? Sorry, when the beginning and end of the shifts are?
Yeah, let me, let me give that to Brandon Stewart. He is up next. He's our plant manager in Taveras, Florida, and he has some. Not just his location, but he can answer some specific location questions such as that one. So Brandon.
Sure. Thank you, everyone. Uh, typically, most of the locations in the United States start between five AM, six AM, uh. For a ten-hour shift. And we usually, if it's a operation such as what we're proposing here. With, with two shifts, we do put a little bit of, of a gap between the two shifts so that. People can leave and another group of people can come in and it's not a congested state while they're trying to come and go at the same time. So it varies, like here in Florida, we start at five AM and we conclude at three thirty PM. And the second shift starts at five PM and concludes at three thirty-eight. And it, it can vary. It's, but it's pretty typical. So here in Taveris, we have approximately ten acres of, of land, see pictured here. Um, majority of the property is for the cylinder storage and truck storage. That you can see towards the left-hand side of the picture there. And then our buildings are divided into, uh, two. One is a production building that's towards the lower part of the picture. And then the upper. Part of the buildings that is in the picture is what we consider a explosion-proof building. It has a, everything is done to a class one div one standard. So that if there, it was an event that there's a, a gas release of any kind, that we would be protected from possible ignition sources. If you hit the next one, Meg. So everything for us, as Josh mentioned earlier, is a secure facility. This is our parking lot that is outside of the office in the building where a lot of the production steps are done. Everything is secured outside of this. Anyone that has access to the building would be an employee that has a unique gate code. To get in employee turnstile. Anyone else that's trying to get into the facility. Has to have access granted by someone at a, a secure locked door that we would allow them to come into the office. So we take it with a lot of seriousness about controlling the access to our property. As we want to protect our employees as well as the community around us. We'll go to the next one there, Meg. This is the other area that is an access point for trucks to come in and out. Just on the other side of the truck there is a keypad that's similar to the one that was in the, the gate where the employee was going in. They have a unique code to get in. The gate allows the person to come through. Once the truck is through, the gate shuts behind them. So that there's limited access to only those that have the codes to get in. Go ahead to the next one. And then, as they were mentioning earlier, the storage facility. All of our cylinders are stored in boxes to where that we can know that they're properly separated and that they're properly stored. We use a FIFO system to make sure that the cylinders are rotated through in a first-in, first-out basis. As cylinders come back, we want to utilize the ones that came back first in the, the production operation. And the ones that are completed, we want them to go out in the same order. So that we make sure that the, the cylinders are going out in a, uh, environment that. It's not going to get to the consumer and have dust, dirt. It, it's going to be cycled through in a, a orderly fashion. Go ahead to the next one. Uh, as Joe was mentioning earlier, the bulk propane deliveries. This is a picture of a truck making deliveries to us. We typically here at Pete will go through about six loads a day. And at the facility there, they're talking about ten. Um, it takes about thirty to forty minutes for a truck to make a delivery. And they'll deliver us about nine thousand gallons of propane at a time. So once the cylinders have been brought back to our locations and put into the storage yard. They're brought up and you kind of see here, it's just the cylinders are stored on. Plastic pallets and dividers so that the cylinders can be safely, uh, stored to be transported. The plastic has, uh, an impression made into it to let the tank foot ring and the, the collar of the cylinder nestle into place. So it locks in and the, the cylinder is secure on that plastic pallet. Uh, our employees would take it off of these pallets, put it on a conveyor system to go through a, a production process. Which would vary, if every cylinder gets washed, then it's going to be something that. A, a person would decide what needs to be done to the cylinder. Does it need a fresh coat of paint? Is it rusty and need to have the paint removed from it so it can have a fresh coat of paint? If it's acceptable. It could have, need a new valve. So we have. Safe equipment to remove the gas from the cylinders to where we can replace the valves, remove the paint. Or if we deem that the cylinder can no longer be used, we punch a hole in the side of the cylinder so that it can never be used again. Before we place it in a, a bin to be recycled. As Meg mentioned earlier, we're very big on making sure that we're as green as possible. Anything that cannot be used in our production process, the, the cylinders that are no longer usable, the valves. Everything is recycled that is recyclable. A lot of our stuff comes in, the cylinders are in the far corner of the picture here, our new cylinders. They're coming shrink wrapped and have cardboard dividers. We send the cardboard out to be recycled. Once the plastic dividers are no longer usable, we send them out to be recycled as well. Basically, the only thing that goes to the landfill from our facilities is, you know, household consumable trash. It's very little that goes unused and recycled. So once everything is completed with the refurbishment of the cylinder to make sure that it's ready to be filled. It, it's going to come to this piece of equipment that we call a carousel. Cylinders are put on automa- automatically. The person connects a filling device to the cylinder. Once it reaches the target weight of. The, what's on the label of fifteen pounds, the cylinder automatically is disconnected. And it's removed from the carousel automatically to finish the process and go back outside where we saw that previous picture where they were. Taking the cylinders off the pallets. That's the same area that they would also stack them back up. So that we can put them out in our storage yard to allow it to set, to be sent out to the consumers. So Josh mentioned earlier that Taveris is unfortunately had an event nine years ago. I was the acting plant manager at that time and we just want to let the community know as well as you all. And it, I do, that if we don't take safety seriously, that I would not be here to this day. Um, for me to live that event and probably say that it'll be one of the most horrifying events that I've had to deal with in my life or. Hope to ever have to deal with again. If I didn't feel that the company took it seriously and. Wanted to make sure that we were doing everything correctly, there's no way that I would stay here and risk my life. Uh, when I have a family that I, I enjoy going home to every night. And we feel the same way about our employees. We want to make sure that. They leave here safe and happy every night when, when we go home. But I thank you for the time to help me show you a little bit about what we do.
Thank you, Brandon. Um, so with that, we will take, um, any, any questions, feedback that anyone has overall. Um, from any of the presentation. We just really appreciate the time.
All right. So let me, um, first open it up to the board if they have any questions, comments, anything that they want to know. Um. Just one for me for now, um, the, I think you mentioned a ten thousand foot dock. I assume there's also impervious surface, which would be, you know, parking places for the employees, trucks, everything else. You have a sense of how, how big of a total impervious surface paved, if you will, or whatever would there be?
Well, we estimate twenty-five acres including the, including the buildings. So in total, it would be about twenty-five acres.
Uh, any other board questions?
Mike?
Yeah, Dick, go ahead.
You said that you wash these tanks. How much water do you anticipate using? How many gallons or how do you? And is the water recycled or what happens with it?
Good question. Our, our washing device, it has about a five hundred gallon, uh, storage tank. And the water is, can, it's reused all week. And typically at the end of the week, we would drain the water. Uh, different locations in the United States, uh, handle it differently depending on what the local requirements are. Um. But about between five hundred and eight hundred gallons a week is what we use for the washing of the cylinders. Uh, that would not include, you know, normal water usage for employees or restrooms of that nature.
Also that is, some tanks get repainted. Will you be having a paint facility, like a paint booth or paint building or?
Yes, uh, we, each facility has a paint system that. Put, you know, applies a fresh coat of paint to the exterior of the cylinders. We use a water-based paint so that it has a very low VOC. So that we're not trying to, uh, put it, we're trying to put as little out as possible to make sure that we're good stewards of the environment.
Paint area is a self-contained building, is that correct? I mean, will there be any overspray out?
Correct. It is in a self-contained paint booth, uh, that we. Clean most places depending on the, the production. Uh, like here in Florida, we clean it multiple times a day. To make sure that it's being, you know, handled properly as well as a thorough cleaning at the end of each shift.
Okay, thank you.
For, for reference, I'll add that the Taveras facility does about three million per year on an annual basis. And so it's. It's pretty close to the size that we would be looking at in Southwick.
Any other board questions? Um, couple that I had, one, I, I just missed it. I'm sure you said it. It's, is it seven days a week that you guys are running?
No.
What are you running?
Typically four days a week with maintenance on, a- and that's the production side. The production side runs. Um, typically Monday through Thursday with me, with Friday for maintenance or any kind of overflow activity, but distribution. Does go out. I don't, Dayhan, is it seven days a week or is it six?
So, yeah, so, uh, between the months of mid-April to, uh, end of September, we do run seven days a week. We do run, uh, delivery operations. Uh, the remainder of the months, uh, we, we typically run five or six days depending on, on the area and the needs of our customers. But we're, we're usually closed on Sundays in the winter and, and, uh, in most areas on Wednesdays as well. Wednesday seems to be a real, real slow month. Um, consumer behavior, uh, around our product, uh, buying pen patterns tend to be heavy. Between Friday and Sunday when, when people are home and they're off and, you know, they're firing up their barbecue grills.
So with that in mind, um, the calculations about the traffic with the ten trucks and the twenty-five long haul and the seventeen route trucks. Um, is that sort of at a peak, um, with expected less depending on, you know, seasonal or, or day of the week?
Correct. Um, that is, that would be the peak peak. In the, in the valley, the lowest valleys, it would be about half of that number. Um, if production is not running, it's. If production is not running, it's not likely that we would have any LP deliveries, liquid propane deliveries. And the number of long haul trucks or route trucks that go out on the weekends, it, as Dayhan said, it just depends on what the volume demand is. So it's, it's not likely to be that every single day.
So is it, am I correct in saying that 10 truck, the propane trucks would be four days a week?
Yes.
And the long haul trucks, it sort of depends on, on what's accomplished, I guess, during those four days of production. And probably the same with, well, route trucks are probably more regular, I would assume, but maybe not if it's not delivering on Sundays or something like that.
Yeah. And, and our route trucks, our, our drivers typically leave our depots around 7:00 AM and they're back anywhere between 3:00 and 5:00 PM. So there, there's, there's, you know, during, during those delivery times where we may have five, six, eight drivers out on the road delivering, they're back before rush hour in most cases typically. So that minimizes any noise pollution or, or any traffic congestion in our local communities that we work in now.
And then I just want to touch on, get a better sense of some of the what's being used for the reconditioning process. You talked about what the paint is being used, but as far as removing the paint as far as reconditioning them in any way, what, what chemicals or what other products are being used in that process?
So we have a machine that uses a silica sand to remove the rust and paint from the cylinders. And then the dust that is created from that is properly disposed of in, in guidance with whatever the local requirements are. Each facility that we have in the United States has a little bit different constraints depending on what state they're in or what municipality. Sorry, but as far as, as far as the other stuff, you know, the paint and the silica sand, everything else is pretty much just the, the normal water that is, has a degreaser put in it to help cut off the grease that possibly could be on the tank from being under your grill and the machine removes the valve, the gas. So everything is contained to really a few things. It's, it's not really chemical based. It's all labor based.
And the sandblasting and the painting are all done in contained areas in the, in the facility?
Correct.
All right. Town officials, any town officials have any questions or comments?
Hi, everybody. You mentioned that the plan at this site is to occupy roughly 25 acres for this facility. Would you mind expanding if there are any plans at this time for the remaining acreage?
At this time, we, we don't have any plans for the remainder.
Do you have a sense on the property as to where it's going as far as orientation of where this is going to go on the property?
We haven't any kind of official drawings with any kind of engineering firm. So we don't really know the quality of the, the actual land. If, if it was ideal, then being able to utilize the corner, you know, have part of it in the corner of college and so the other, that other road there.
Yeah. So that's not, I can tell you now that that's not going to happen only because there's wetlands in that corner. A significant way fronting on College Highway and, and Octanary a little ways. So I can tell you that that corner is, is going to be off limits now.
You just know that, wetlands.
It's like, I, I forget how much it is. It's not a huge for the size of the parcel. It's not a significant amount, but there are some in that front area. Okay. Public questions for the folks who are here tonight. Well, we start with the folks who are in person first. Anything?
I've got a series of questions.
Why don't we? Cindy, why don't you ask a couple and then let me take some from Zoom and then I'll come back. If you don't mind, just to sort of let everybody go.
Okay. Inga, hometown.
Oh, Inga, I'm sorry. What did I say, Cindy? I'm sorry.
I, I have a couple of questions for Josh. And it's in regards to the safety component. I'd like to know, Josh, what type of fire suppression you have at these locations?
The, the fire suppression would, it kind of varies per plant and what local regulations require. We have, and maybe Brandon might be able to speak to this a little bit as well, but we have some locations that have a sprinkler system that's, and that's really where most of our locations, Callender is a sprinkler system requirement. But not all due to the build or the location required.
So there is a possibility that here in Massachusetts, you wouldn't require to have a fire suppression system?
Yeah, well, it's over 7,000, 7500 square feet. By law, you have to have it.
Right. So I'm just surprised they didn't know that they needed to have.
They're still in the investigation stage.
Okay. In regards to the facilities, is there a full-time EHS professional on staff?
Is there, I'm sorry, is there a full-time EHS professional?
Like is there a full-time EHS professional onsite during both first and second shifts?
We don't actually have a EHS professional like as a titled position within, at each facility. But I work very closely with, with all the plate managers and make sure that we have compliance in, in safety structure and, and burn foundation at each, at each location.
Okay. And in the Northeast, since you've identified this region as being one of high usage, why have you chosen Southwick, which is a very rural farming community? And you're actually surrounded by farms. Why have you chose this location?
I can, I can add in on that too overall. I, I mentioned it a little earlier, but we are in smaller communities overall. And that is where we really prefer to be vested in the communities overall. So Southwick, when we were, you know, going through overall, it, just because we are in the community already within our feral gas footprint for our operations and cylinder operations. But seeing a lot of the items that fit overall, and there was a question asked about like, what else would be done with the property? And at one of our other locations in Hamptonville, there is a whole area there where we have trees that haven't been touched and we have left that as it is natural for the community. That way, it's, you know, there's still areas in there where it's kept the way it is for environmental purposes. And we believe in that for our locations as well. And yes, there, there is a property there, but doing everything we can that's within our control, just to make certain that those locations, you know, we're, we're keeping up with, you know, local areas. But for us, we, we are employee owners. We all are. And the, the smaller communities and some of the larger communities overall do not have some of the same, I guess, overall, same philosophies that we have as well. And we would prefer to be vested in a community that's also vested in, in us as well. Like we're bringing jobs, you know, to the area and we want to make certain that those people that are in the community as well, that we're helping them and that it's, you know, both of the, the employees and us are really working together. And I think we tend to find that in some of those areas overall, with smaller areas that are, you know, vested in the local businesses in the area. And yes, you, you may say we're, we're a large company, but we, we truly are smaller.
Let me just pop into some of the Zoom questions so that we can let everybody get in and I'll certainly come back to you. There's, you'll have time to do it. So anybody on Zoom, if you can use the raise hand function, great. If not, Dan will sort of open it up. But is there raised hands?
It's not, yeah.
Okay. If anybody's having any issue, just you can pop on and say you have a question. Just going to make sure you identify yourself. Okay. Inga, it's back to you.
Okay. I know you've been talking about your safety record and how much time and resources you put into the training. And I know that your last incident was in 2013. But do you believe as an employee-owned company, that's best to share best practices with other propane companies? Because within the past two years, there's been four explosions within the Northeast. And I would think if you're so committed to what it is you're doing, that you would probably offer yourself to share best practices to these other propane companies. So can you speak about your involvement with sharing those best practices?
I'll jump in there. I'm a Director of Safety. I'd just like to say that, you know, there was a question earlier about EHS personnel onsite. All of our managers are, are trained to, to act as EHS professionals when, when they're onsite. And they all have the authority, any employee has the authority to raise questions or, you know, do, do whatever they see as, you know, as the right thing when it comes to safety items. As far as the, the events that you're speaking to, I'm, I'm not familiar with the the actual explosions or fires that you're talking about. But, you know, I can, I can, I can say with all honesty, the Blue Rhino Safety Team and the management team are second to none. They have multiple years of experience and the, all, all the policies and procedures that Josh was talking about earlier. You know, that's, it's really, that's what they do and they do it very well.
In the communities that you currently reside in, do they have full-time fire departments or are they partially part-time slash full-time?
Are you referring to the, to the Blue Rhino Plant Locations?
Yeah, the similar locations to what you're proposing for our community. Do those communities have full-time fire departments?
Brandon, you want to jump in there?
I was going to jump in there. I've had the opportunity to run different locations and some of the locations have full-time fire departments such as here in Taveris and some of the locations have volunteer fire departments. But the one thing that we do is we have constant contact with them. Anything that needs to be updated, anything that they need to know, we bring them in, let them see the facilities. That way they're comfortable if there was something that they needed to come on site with. Whether it was a medical emergency or unfortunately like the event that I had to deal with here nine years ago, that they're familiar with what we do and what they need to do if they had to come on site. So doesn't matter whether it's volunteer or full-time paid. We have both.
Awesome. Okay, thank you. There's one, I see one online. Someone's raising their hand.
Hi, David Reel, 84 South Long Yard. So in that Tavoris fire, what were the resources that the full-time fire department had to respond with compared to what might be available to us with our volunteer department? And also on the infrastructure question regarding the trucks, we really don't have the infrastructure in town for that many trucks. I know you mentioned you want to be vested in small-town communities, but I didn't think that adequately answered the question asked about why, why a small town? We don't have the infrastructure. Thank you.
So your first part of the question was as far as what resources were needed to make sure that we have a good working relationship to what's needed for our safety and the community's safety. A lot of the, the locations that have volunteer fire departments, it's just simply normal fire trucks and the water mains that we have, fire hydrants, sprinkler systems. And just a general knowledge, each facility has to submit a tier-two report annually so that the different agencies know how we store our product, where it's stored at. So that there's a good working knowledge, even if they've never been on site. The information is right there at the disposal for whoever's coming on site.
I guess my question was more along the lines of what, what type of resources were needed for? You know, maybe, am I mixing up the Texas fire and the Florida one or?
Yeah, possibly. Here, the, the one in Florida was just in the cylinder storage area. So it did not come into the building. It did not have anything to do with the operational equipment or the process that we do. This actually was just out in our storage area where the cylinders were consumed by a fire, which is what Josh was talking about earlier. We've expanded the spacing that we put in between the, the rows and pallets of cylinders so that we could possibly prevent any spreading if something were to ever happen at any of our facilities again. We weren't prepared for that to, to be that easy to spread between pallets. And that's one of the, the changes that we've made to make sure that it shouldn't happen again.
Gotcha. Yeah, I guess my question, I know we're going to get to the discovery phase, but is Southwick adequately staffed as the first response with our current fire department to prevent that from getting out of hand? Or not, given that it's not a full-time staff department?
Right. And, and I'm going to say probably it's too early to tell. We haven't really even gone beyond the, the, the basic start of the process.
Yeah. And that would certainly be, you know, and if there's an application that gets put in, it would certainly go over to the fire department. And they would offer their comments as far as, you know, what they thought about the plan and their ability to, to deal with the contingencies.
But is there anything you want to add? If you're good?
That would be something we would need to investigate. And, you know, your fire chief is very welcome to reach out to the fire chief and, and Taveris and you know, we've got a really good relationship there as we do with all of our other facilities and you know, our production facilities in numerous states. So more than welcome.
I'd like to add also that part of this process and building a facility like this, the NFPA 58 code requires a fire safety analysis to be performed. And part of that fire safety analysis is just that, to, to recognize the amount of storage, the components are involved and get and receive input from the fire department as far as what their capabilities are.
Any other public? I don't know if I see anybody else on Zoom, but is there anybody else on Zoom who has anything? Oh, and yeah, go ahead.
Andrew Gale, Quaker Grove. Where are you getting the, what facility are you using right now to service the Northeast that you want to put this one in to replace or consolidate?
We contract with two different independent production facilities. In Delaware, one of them is in Delaware.
The current product that we get at the Corner Store is delivered from Delaware up to a distribution center up here somewhere?
Likely.
Likely or don't know?
No, likely. There's, we, we have that independent. We also have another independent in Pennsylvania and there is a cylinder shortage that for the past couple of years. And so for the past two years, there has been product delivered to the Northeast that actually came from Hamptonville, North Carolina or Walton, Indiana.
And then it's put on delivery trucks somewhere? Or is that taking place right now?
For the Northeast?
For Southwick.
For Southwick. For Southwick. That, Dayhan, that's, that's, that's an independent, right?
Yeah, so, so this, the, any, any distribution that we do to your local stores in your communities comes out of our Springfield, Massachusetts depot, which the product comes from Dover, Delaware. We do have a depot in Epping in Maine as well, in New Hampshire and Maine. And some of our product actually comes from one of our competitors that has a production plant in Northfield, Massachusetts. A very small production facility, but nonetheless, to mitigate costs, we do contract out to a Northfield, Massachusetts production facility for a good portion of our product for New Hampshire and the state of Maine. But yeah, so we, we do, we do deliver to Southwick and it, and it all comes out of the Springfield depot. Those are where the drivers are coming from.
Yeah, the Springfield depot is a Blue Rhino facility or is it somebody else's?
It's a Blue Rhino facility. It's, it's just a depot. We have storage. We store our cylinders there. We have, everyone in that area is from the local community. We have forklift operators that load the trucks, unload the trucks. And we have drivers that come in every day and deliver the product and return to the same depot at the end of the day and return home.
Where exactly is that location in Springfield?
On Page Boulevard, one seven zero nine Page Boulevard in Springfield.
There's no real estate around that geographical area that would accommodate this four-point-two-million cylinder storage facility or production facility?
We, we've looked in the past, not with the acreage that we need, not with the natural buffers that we're looking to put in place and the, the open space as well. You know, when you're, when you talk about, you know, Agwam or Chicopee or Springfield, it's so heavily populated right now. You, it's difficult to get properties in those areas that would fit our needs. And those of you that have lived up here for most of your lives know that we've looked at the old Monsanto facility. You, you can't touch those properties. They're so contaminated. And, you know, we, we just don't want to get into a situation where, you know, we're going to start stirring up, you know, a mess that someone else has made years ago. And it's, you know, sitting dormant right now. Again, we, we always look to be good stewards in our community. What, one of the things that we do for all of our communities in Massachusetts, since January first of this year to the first week of this month, we've already picked up at local Department of Public Works and in many towns across the state of Massachusetts, over ten thousand scrap tanks. And we do it free of charge so that the taxpayers don't incur a cost for their towns to, to eliminate that waste and for it not to go into landfills. So we take all that steel back to our facilities and we send it back to those that are refurbishable, go back to production plants, and those that cannot be, we send the scrap back to, to a recycling company.
Since nineteen thirty-nine, have you ever had to close a facility that was production-focused? Have you ever had to do that in your history?
Yes.
It's another kind of remediation process you have. If you don't want Monsanto's facility, because there's going to be so much work to be done to it, if you were to come here and say the propane business taint, no pun intended, what kind of remediation would we be stuck with?
None. There's, propane is non-toxic.
Propane is non-toxic. And unfortunately, Jenny Moser cannot be on this call today, but yeah, propane does not, is not a contaminant. Once it's released, it's, it dissipates.
Within the last year, you also made a preliminary presentation to Greenfield, Connecticut, Economic Development Commission. What was the reason that was wrong?
Wetlands.
As far as building on that site, so.
So you can get twenty-five acres there on that site?
And specifically, there were vernal pools on that property.
Oh, is that okay? Gotcha.
Any other?
Hi, Cynthia Marshall, forty-five Coles, New Road, which is about a half mile from this property. How many gallons of propane will be on this site on every day? Considering empty tanks, full tanks, the nine thousand gallon, oh, tanks. How many gallons is going to be saved on that property every day?
I'm gonna estimate about a hundred and eighty thousand gallons.
I'd like to add in there, as far as the bulk storage components on the property, those, those large bulk storage tanks are built with many safety components in mind. They have, they have fail-safe primary valves that, that failed closed if there were, ever were an event. But there, you know, there are multiple safety features on the, on the bulk storage facilities.
But it's not the bulk ones that blew up in Tavoris. It was an employee accident that happened. And unfortunately, there were five at least critically injured people down there. And it was an employee error that caused that. And the forklift was not OSHA-approved. So, you know, I'm not talking about the bulk tanks exploding, I'm talking about the five gallons and smaller tanks were the ones that were causing, really not filling the dollars with damage. That was mine. That's why I was asking the toll that was running down there.
Any other questions? Okay. So just to give you folks, and it certainly happened at the end of this, if there's anything else you want to add. But just to give you a sense of where things stand, I wanted to give you a bit of the landscape of where things are in the town. Because there have been some, you're sort of coming in, in the middle of some potential changes to the process, which you may or may not be aware of, I don't know. But we recently, so as you may or may not know, there was a proposed facility on that property for last year, a Carvana facility that was going to go on there on about sixty-something acres there. And that was withdrawn over the summer. Since then, we've dealt with some process issues for these larger development applications. We recently recommended to town meeting a process for major development applications, which yours would certainly fall into. We could certainly get you a copy of what's being proposed. It's not going to be voted on until May seventeenth, May seventeenth. But, you know, and I, it strikes me from this conversation here today that what you see in there may not be atypical or something that you folks think is unusual to do. It, you know, it talks about having a community meeting and sort of being able to answer questions for the community before the application goes in and providing some sort of more information upfront so that it's, it's available. And then there's less sort of continuing out the hearing and asking for more information as we go along. It's just sort of front-loading where the information comes from. So, you know, we'll certainly get you a copy of that. I don't know if it's going to pass town meeting. I don't, in all honesty, know the law as to when it goes into effect after it's passed at town meeting. But, you know, it's something that I think if it does get passed at town meeting, I would encourage you folks to sort of follow along with and, and comply with the process. I think it's a good process and it would certainly help the board in evaluating the application if it does come in. I don't know where you are in the process. I don't know if it's, if it's weeks or months or however long, you know, you're anticipating to, to potentially put in an application. But just so you know that that's on the, on the horizon. And that's the, the structure that you're coming into. Nothing else I don't think with the, with the process?
No.
Okay. All right. Is there anything else that you folks had questions about or wanted to add? Nothing? I mean, the, the folks from Feral Gas and Blue Rhino, anything that you've? Any questions you have for us or anything else you wanted to add to the presentation before we wrap it up for tonight?
Drew, do you have anything? I don't have anything else. I just wanted to, to thank everyone again for the questions overall, the feedback. And as I mentioned, we, we care about the communities we're in and, and that's something that we take very seriously with those employees and those in the area. So we appreciate everyone's time and for allowing us to be here this evening.
All right. Well, thank you very much. You know, certainly be in touch with Mr. Goddard here. He can, he can direct you to the right folks to speak to and help arrange for any questions that you have in the meantime. But otherwise, thank you for your time today.
Thank you for your time, Southwick.
Thank you.
Have a good night. All right. I'm still technically on time because we don't have anything else time. All right. So discussions. Noble Steve Crossing subdivision requests to release remaining lots in lieu of bond. I'm thinking of performance bond for remaining work.
Uh, doesn't look like anybody, this is the evening, so I'll give a brief update. I hope that works best for everyone. So Salt Marsh Brothers Construction Incorporated has submitted a bond in the amount of six hundred thousand dollars, a performance bond for the remainder of construction, the roadway and infrastructure over at Noble Street Crossing. That number was arrived at I'm gonna say a number of meetings, but it was all recent exchanges between Randy Bundy, the director, and Justin Saltmarsh as the developer. So that has been provided for review by town clerk for one. And assurances in terms of its lifespan, how it is renewed, when it is, when the contractor, the developer is relieved of that responsibility. So this bond would allow for the developer to release the remaining lots that are held in the covenant new of said bond. This has also been submitted to town council. So before you, I think you have a copy of the cover letter. I think they have the latest release, ring grounds of valuation estimate. And a copy of the bond that was submitted. Legal has requested some changes to the form or at least some, we'll call it stuff, information to be added in the, we'll call it the modifications section. As I think you see, you'll see this bond is really, the language is geared towards a an owner, if you will, and a contractor, which is a different relationship than the town having the developer. We're not bearing the cost. So, so there, I spent probably a half dozen or so pages to Mr. Saltmarsh, working to work with his attorney and the bond provider. It's update and we look forward to seeing that.
Pretty much on hold.
That's right. I think, I think when we do get that, let me put this way.
Just say it's on hold.
The, when we get the revised documents back, I'll send that back out to town council and make sure that explains the adjustments meet their expectation as well.
Anybody have any questions generally about the sort of construct of it or what they're planning on doing? Only thing I would, Randy, you were, I think the number kind of came from you or you were involved in it. The only thing that sticks in my head right now, which we'll get to later, is the ranch issue and the sort of quality of construction and the sort of costs that may arise from that, right? And I'm just wondering whether, you know, what, what checks have been in place or where, where does it stand right now as far as comfort level or confidence with the quality of what's been done such that it's not, you know, we don't get a situation where it's not only that you have five hundred something thousand left at work, but then you also have whatever for, for correction.
Yeah, so there was a buffer, right? My number was about five hundred and twenty thousand dollars in my, my total. It's about the six hundred thousand dollar bond. That was part of it, you know, just there are some things that may need to be corrected before the project is turned over. So that kind of, that is a little buffer in there. Hopefully as he works forward and does more work, you know, all of that, we won't need six hundred thousand dollars out. I, I, I'm pretty confident that six hundred thousand should cover it.
Okay.
I have, I have considered that question. It's a good question. But I'm confident we'll.
All right. So we'll put that on for the next meeting and hopefully have an answer from legal at that point in time. Yeah, okay. All right. All right. Next is New England Disc Golf Center, forty-one fifty-one John Mason Road. Requested minor site plan modification. So Randy, you can put on your other hat and.
So just to, for the record, Randy Brown, ninety-five Fred Jackson Road here on behalf of my mother, the property owner, Feta Brown of thirty-nine John Mason Road. So I've been before you a few times now for the disc golf course on forty-one fifty-one John Mason Road. What do you have these plans here? So we have what I would consider a very minor modification to the site plan. Right now we have a shed on the property that we use for retail sales of the disc golf. Our day, day rates, we have apparel that we sell. So we're looking to do is, and, and what we do is we take all that, out of items out, we have a little pop-up tent. And we sell out of the tent basically. So what we're looking to do is expand, you know, this is doing, is very, very good. What we want to do is take that shed and move it to another location of the property and use that for storage of equipment. And then basically bring in a larger shed, ten by thirty shed, and all of our disc soft golf sales will be inside that shed. So everywhere I'm moving things and product in and out all day, we'll have things on the shelf. And they support orderly. So that's really the, the change. The plans you have in front of you shows what's existing. And then kind of where we're looking to locate the, the old shed and then where the new shed is going in the same place. There's no changes to the flow of traffic around the property. There's no modifications to the number of parking spaces. It's really just putting a larger shed where the old one is now, where the current one is now. It's process.
So building inspector, there's no issue with the proposed change? And it'd be the shortest letter I've ever received from these folks. I have a letter from Diana Day Fossett, attorney with Dory Wallace. Says, I'm writing on behalf of my clients, Robert and Carol Barivo, who are brothers to the New England Disc Golf Center. We have reviewed the April sixth, twenty twenty-two submission from this round, which requests a relocation of a shed and installation of a new shed to be used for disc golf sales. The submission makes clear that. to be used for disc golf sales. The submission makes clear that there are no other site changes and no request to modify any other condition and special permit. Based on this limitation, the Baribos do not have any objections to the proposed modification to the site plan. The end. Um, so um, any um, questions, comments from the board?
Doing well.
Thank you. Going very well this year. Um, parking lot was was full this afternoon.
So, you know, I would consider this is simply be a a minor modification. It doesn't require any sort of, um, it's simply to the to the site plan itself. It's not a use issue from what I can tell. Um, certainly if it leave it to the board, they have a different opinion, but I don't see any need to impact the special permit itself. It doesn't change anything. It's simply a minor site plan.
Change. As it is rakes.
Um, but I will open it up for any town officials or public comments if they have anything either on Zoom or in person. Okay. All right. Um, so what did you submit for a site? Is this what you submitted as a site plan?
Yes.
Those two, those two. These two, these two documents. Oh wait, now this is existing.
The ones existing.
Okay. All right. This is existing one is what you submitted with the um, the prior application with special permit. Or at least that area of it, I should say. All right. Um, so do I hear a motion to approve um, this modification to the site plan dated April sixth, twenty twenty-two for forty-one fifty-one John Mason.
The one.
Right here, a second.
I don't think. I will say he's in a butter.
Is he?
Maybe not today, but yeah.
Uh, Dick, you're in a butter? Did you bail out on this, on this one originally? And she's also your accountant. Yes, you did. All right. So um, yes. Um, do I hear a motion? Still moved. All right. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Uh, thank you, Randy. Uh, we'll do a roll call for Michael Dory.
Dave's been.
Site plan modification is not approved function of the associate member. A special permit. Right, Douglas?
I don't know if that's true, but uh, I don't know if that's true. You have to do a site plan approval for every special permit and associate member votes on that during the course of that site, special permit and site plan approval. But we're fine. Fair enough. All right. So um, that's awesome.
Appreciate your time.
All right. Town Beach overflow parking area, Mr. Salt.
I gotta step aside on that.
That's a real actual blueprint.
Look at that. There we go.
Nobody brings up plans when I'm presenting.
What's wrong with plans? All right, what what I got here is the uh, the Southwick Town Beach that has very, very limited parking on it. It's got um, two handicap spots with a divider for for access and then there's five other spots uh, for parking for the town beach. Um, there's parking all along the roads and most of it's no parking. There's areas down at the bottom, but with all the controversy going on in the neighborhood, we thought it was best at the town beach to plan ahead, just to make sure that we're in compliance and we're doing things we think we should. So looking at that, there was a section that that John had found for me that was actually laid out for parking in the wood lines across the street on Barbara. But it was never constructed. It's just basically pulling over the side of the road. Um, the cost would be substantial to turn that into parking lots at this point. But what we do have is we have a field in the front of the of the uh, beach house, which used to be the site for the old uh, bleach field for the septic system. We're on sewer there now, so it's not, it's not a use. Um, I talked it over with the DPW and and talked to him about putting a parking lot and talked it over with a couple of other uh, departments. And it was found to be better to leave a grass and open up a section of the fence and put a gate in and just use the parking on the grass there, which would probably fit about twenty-five cars if needed. But that gave us plenty of parking for the, for the town beach and it's an area which we can control. You know, there'll be tickets administered to cars as they pull in, standing that they're a member of the beach and not just randomly parking on the street or pulling in. Uh, the lot will be secured at night with a gate. Um, and because we want to keep it grass, so the grass will constantly heal itself. We don't want to put any stone down or anything like that because it's only going to be used a couple of months out of the year. For the rest of the time, it's just going to be grass, be mobile grass. This way it stays just as it is. But I, you know, I wouldn't clear everybody else and I thought it was best just to check, make sure we weren't doing anything to our permit and make sure we were okay. So just wanted your opinion, your thoughts. Blessing. Maybe some white paint stripes.
Yeah. Line the grass or.
Get you to come over.
In the middle of it.
Go right ahead. That's what you feel you need to do. We will accommodate you. That'll be the special, special handicap.
Yes.
I don't think it needs any change to anything. I mean, I I don't. I guess I almost see it as similar to what they do on all these property over by once a river, right? I mean, don't mean don't we allow them to do that over?
Yeah, this is a, just an overflow parking area. This is what this is pretty much going to be.
How much distance would there be from the closest parked car to the water?
Hundred and fifty-nine feet.
Space for.
Yes, I did measure it. And it was at, and it was at high tide.
All right. Any uh, other questions? Okay. Um, any public questions on this issue?
Yeah. In the hotel in forty-five Klein Road. The songs can be there issuing the ticket. Are they going to have to be a town employee then?
Yeah, there's already a reception station to receive people to pay to get into the beach. At that time, they'd just simply be handed a ticket. They're not paying for parking. They're just handed a ticket to put on their dash or the signifies that there with the beach.
Okay, so it's only for Southwood residents then?
It's for anybody who comes to the beach.
Oh, so not like how that sits where you have to be.
No, it's the town beach in Southwood. It's open to anybody who wants to enjoy.
If you can find a.
If you can find a park.
We'll have a better chance to do.
And we're doing, we're going to be sanding the beach and some other things along the lines to make it prettier.
Anything else? Any on Zoom? Good. All right. Um, so I think that's all set. Um, what do you have for a plan? But I mean, what year is that from?
Oh, that's nineteen ninety-nine. Twenty-two or something? Eighty-nine.
All right. There's no special permit that's on file. I mean, this is.
We do have a special permit uh, that was advanced. A curious document. No, no, a special permit.
And this is for the current parking area or the proposed parking?
This is for the current configuration, although the town did not pursue construction of many of the parking spaces.
Does this incorporate the proposed area too? Or no?
The, yes. At that time, it was on the site plan, but at that time it was a uh, septic.
All right. So it will be on this. It's incorporated in here.
Within the same site, yes.
Okay.
See out here, Mike, to get them. This is the fence area right here. You just could open up a spot and make a defense right here, right off of Barbara. They pull right in. Parked at night. Remember, it's a very expensive fast sports car, but not allowed to go in second gear.
One second. I just want to see if there's anything we need to modify in here that would prohibit you from doing it. Otherwise, I don't really care because it's not doing anything.
Probably don't lose the donor. That's the only reason it wasn't used in the first place is it did have the bleach field in it.
Sure. Uh, as such, was the subject to travel.
Because you look at the plant, the parking's all around the, all around it. It wasn't for the septic, this is the septic. Probably would have been the, would have been the parking lot. These were going to keep it rural. It's going to be natural. We're not going to worry about anything. Everybody's going to be happy. There's no standing puddles. Everything properly drains. I went over there severely arranged just to make sure it was fine.
So here's what I'm gonna suggest. We do, I don't see anything in here that requires modification from the actual special permit. So my suggestion would be simply what we did with Randy's. Um, and have something on file that's an updated site plan that has a minor modification. Whether we can.
We do. All right. So we can.
Scan that in. We can kind of tweak it and then have something we can sign. Uh, and uh, at that on file. So at least there's something on file that reflects parking in that area. And we'll just go through this one more time. If there's any issue, we'll certainly let you know, but I don't see anything in here from I looked at pro pivots parking in that area and it's just simply a matter of modifying the site plan.
I checked with with Concon and they were perfectly fine with it.
Yep. All right.
Said no need to see them.
So do I hear a um, well, here's the problem we have. So we'll table it until the next.
I can't run back around and go, I.
Yeah, no. Oh, you don't know. We have, we have three.
Six there. That's right.
Doesn't, is there any reason you have to uh, recuse yourself? Um, all right. So we have three. So do I hear a motion to um, accept the minor modification to the site plan for um, what's the address here?
Standby. Got the GIS up right over here. I'm not gonna trust that. Fourteen Beach Road.
Fourteen Beach Road to um, indicate on the plan that there will be parking in the currently uh, grassed area uh, where it used to be a septic. Uh, do I hear a second?
Second.
Do a roll call vote. Michael Dory, aye?
Richard Olson, aye.
Dave's been aye. All right.
I win. Hey, being on this side's not that hard. Thank you.
All right.
Let's do this. Thank you.
Okay. Routine business. On discussion, the ranch estates.
This is the Buffalo Road, right?
Yes. So I'm just trying to, and I apologize in my haste today. I did not grab my notes from my conversation with my.
So we're gonna. We can edit ten minutes and I.
We're gonna see how well my memory works, which is not well right now, but um, so. All right. So just give me a minute and I'll get the specifics. Um, but here's the general sense of it, right? There is a statute that allows the board to um, uh, impose a increased bond on the developers of that uh, facility or that development. Um, and so it would be in this particular case Pinnacle Estates. I'll get the proper name, but it's Pinnacle Estates and
Former developer?
Yeah, it's the former developer. Who sold at the pinnacle.
It's right there.
It's right there, but whatever the former one, the one, so so.
Old farm.
No. Yeah, so original developer develops it, sells off that section to Pinnacle, which is um, that's it. Peter Gappas. That's his, so and he was going to do that section. So the law allows um, a increase, a motion, the board took, make a motion to increase the bond um, and impose it on those two developers to address this situation. Um, I, what I want to find is A, the correct names and B, that section of the general laws, which gives you the authority to do that, uh, which is what I had in my notes and I'm trying to quickly find. Um, but you know, my suggestion would be um, that it would be appropriate to to make that motion. Um, and well, I think at this point, uh, what I gotta say, I was gonna say the language of the statute. I'm not sure we need to do the motion now or whether we just need to vote to request um, to have Randy Brown or have DPW generally come up with a number for us um, to assess for a bond amount. Um, and we will offer it to the developer as well, the developers. They can put in what they think would be a completion amount. We'll put it, I mean, the the association can do it too, right? I don't care who whoever wants to submit a number, but from our standpoint, you know, we'll ask it from DPW. Submit numbers that we can then assess and and make a motion to to set a bond amount that would be applicable to those two developers. Um, this case, this is already in litigation um, involving the town, the town brought litigation against a bunch of people, try to get everybody to the table and figure it out.
I was gonna say, wasn't the problem that we didn't have any developers left that intact?
There was, no, the issue was is that the covenant was released um, mistakenly, or I I I don't even want to get into how it was. I don't know years ago. So um, so, but there is a process by which a bond can be imposed for these things. And so um, let me just get the language. Let me just, give me one minute um, to make sure that I'm saying it right. I don't want there to be any issues, but the process would be to um, ask DPW, the developers, the Home Art Association, whatever other interested party, they want to submit a proposed bond amount, you know, in in the, in the basis for it, we'll consider it at the next meeting, then make a motion to uh, propose a lot of money. So give me one second just to look at this. Um, and actually, why don't I, why don't we um, go, well, anybody here can give a master plan advisory committee?
I've been asked to.
Yeah, fantastic. Were you at the last meeting?
I was.
Awesome.
Everybody, yep. All right. So, yeah, the master plan committee met, uh, what was that, April seventh? Um, our focus right now is on uh, really getting things lined up for committee outreach, make people aware of the master planning process, the fact that we are doing one, the fact that we are going to be going out to everybody with a survey, try to get uh, to be input. Um, we have a draft survey, survey put together. Um, went through that, all the questions, there's some tweaks, probably at the next meeting. Um, hopefully get that finalized. Uh, in parallel with that, we're also putting together, I'll call it um, uh, informational material, pamphlets, posters, those kind of things through to make sure that we can kind of communicate to the community at large, uh, kind of what we're doing and and where we're going. Um, and then also trying to schedule a situation where members of the master planning committee will be out at various events where there's going to be a bunch of folks in town, really just to kind of spread the word, make sure everybody's looking forward to the the survey coming out in the, we're shooting for like the end of May-ish timeframe. Uh, the first event we're going to shoot for will be the art show, which I believe is toward the end of April. Next meeting is the twenty-first of April.
Thank you.
That's it. Uh, Dick, short-term rental subcommittee update.
We were going to have a meeting this evening, but it got cut off. So um, conflict of interest, I guess, conflict of meetings. We reschedule, I believe, for May third. Uh, we, Randy has asked for questions from the board. And I believe some have been presented. And we also have a new member and I think John had to update you on that because I don't have all the information.
Fantastic. So, uh, let's see. Jack Glenn Senna is a new member. Uh, resident representative on the. Short term rental subcommittee. Or do a contribution. Participation.
All right. All right. Minutes approval. What, uh, what got circulated?
I was going to ask if anybody read them. I did not.
So.
Just a placeholder for today.
All right. Got it.
Thank you, John. You're busy. I understand.
That's okay.
Taking care of the beach thing.
We did start the discussion.
All right. So, um. Then we'll see if my memory actually serves me correctly, but I believe the section is eight is. That's general laws, chapter forty one, section eighty one W. Allows a planning board on its own motion, uh, to modify, amend, or rescind its approval of a plan of a subdivision. Or to require a change in a plan as a condition of. It's retaining the status of an approved plan. Um, so that's the provision. Um, so what we'll do is, you know, I'll just make a motion tonight. Majority votes to, um. Request. From the interested parties as well as DPW. Suggested bond amounts for the road work that needs to be completed and then subdivision. Uh, with the intent to, um, make a motion at the next meeting to. Or to discuss the bond amount and to make a motion at the next meeting to propose the bond amount on the prior. Um. Developers, uh, the current and prior, I guess, prior developers because they've both gone on the business. So. Um, with the idea of being that there's the potential to pierce the, for, for, go after the individual. So. Um. Do I hear a motion to, um, make the request to those individuals for a bond amount? Do I hear a second?
Second.
Your roll call vote. Michael Dory, I.
Richard Olson, I.
Dave Spina, I.
All right. So we will get that out. I'll, I'll work with you, John, and figure out. If that's where we do that. Um. I think that's it. Anything else?
Just one more thing.
Mr. Sutton.
Make the motion to close the meeting.
Second. Those, they say, I, all right. All right.